tractor for installing defective cladding. Malali originally carried out cladding on four residential towers in Gosport between 2006 and 2008. Inspections of the residential towers were carried out shortly after the Brimford Tower tragedy, when fire experts concluded the design and use of the cladding system installed by Malali were defective. In July 2022, the High Court agreed Malali's design and workmanship were defective, in breach of contract, and the cladding system did not comply with building regulations at the time it was installed. It also ruled that Malali's turnover decreased by 20.8 million pounds, significantly affecting its financial year. Malali, contractor and housing developer, did a drastic 72% fall in pre-tax profits of £566,000 amid a turnover reduction of 20.8 million for the fiscal year ending the 31st of March 2024. Subject to inflationary pressures, the first profit margin shrank from 1.6 to 1.3 this year. Their cash at the bank of Malali at the 31st of March 2024 is zero. They are living on an overdraft agreement with their bank for £15 million. They have a burden of £25 million line of credit. As a result, the cost of interest payable and similar expenses rose from £3,000 in 2023 to £615,000 in 2024. They are part of the group which is known as Sherre Green Limited, and again, they have had substantial costs in the cash at bank, and they have zero cash at the bank as well. So I would remind you also that you are partners in this project over on the Meriden estate. There is a sign there, and it says there are three partners, one of which is home to England, which receive funding from the Department of Health, Communities, Local Government, and Housing, which is another avenue that you may have to explore, because they provide £4.4 billion towards either the 36 million cost of the project. And I actually read the planning application, you know, I was tracking down 80 pages. One of the things I did not see in there was a sub-soil survey being conducted for the site where the shops are located and the flats above them. And it seems to me that much of the problem with this project, which was supposed to have been completed in March 2024, renowned in July 2025, had been as a result of building on unsuitable land for that part of the project. And that's one of the reasons why I'm saying in the petition to you that we should get your building control inspectors to go in and inspect the work that's being done, which is still piece new, continuing to be done, because the people who live, all the people who lived above the shops have been moved out. Why? Is it a sustainable and safe structure? The other thing is, as you say, phase one, predicted to conclude in spring 2020, will see the development of the retail block and the first of the new residences, including bungalows and houses. 2020, we're in 2025, it's still not complete. The other, these are all extracts from articles in the Watford Observer over the years, and the final article says, Meriden's Yorkway shops here closed after payment business. So the community housing trust are sinking in barriers. What is going on there? This is, these are people who are Watford residents, these are people living on the Meriden estate. They're in danger of losing the heart of that community, the shops. They've got reduced footfall because they've lost the people who used to live above them, you know, the night, the life, that's it. So please answer that, check out the sub so, the sub soil survey, and please, please take some action and help the shopkeepers.
Thank you so much, John, thank you. We now move on to the member minutes, maximum of 15 minutes. Does any member wish to speak? Please raise your hand now. Okay, so, so I've got councillor here, councillor Glenn, councillor Geraldo, and councillor Bell. Am I missing anyone? Okay. So we have a maximum of 15 minutes, and he will help us what else to comment. Four minutes, please. Okay. Should we start with councillor here then? Are you the first person?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you. And I was submitted a petition, councillor council. Since I'm elected Meriden County councillor, I have several emails from residents who have seen this petition and were genuinely concerned that the Meriden shops are going to be closed. Given this petition was online and properly placed in a co-op, I imagine this has caused wider concern. This petition has not helped the local community, it creates strife and doubt. I can't dispute what is in this petition, but I do recognise that the ongoing works on the Meriden Generation project have caused disruption and frustration. Shopkeepers have been hugely affected with periods where they had to close, and the noise of the remedial works on the buildings have impacted their shops whilst they have been working. A project that should have been finished years ago has dragged on and made local residents build which do not care about them in the local community. Their response was both Watford Community Housing Trust and Harpshire County Council for these facilities. I am privileged to have this platform, and I want to reassure the residents of Meriden that WCHT are actively engaging with Harpshire County Council to complete the highway works. I want to see the resurfacing of road completed as soon as possible with the pavement works to follow. I want to ensure that everyone recognises that completing these works is paramount to make more residents build more housing today. Thank you very much.
Councillor Glenn.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to deal with, first of all, the building control aspects of this, the form of my portfolio. Building control is a checking authority, and they will go in and check that the works are done to a compliant standard. In terms of the Meriden, the structural failures were immediately acknowledged by Watford Community Housing Trust to Watford Borough Council. So that decision was submitted to Building Control for immediate work to commence. Seven inspections have been carried out since October of last year on this building. Unfortunately, we don't have the power to set a deadline for when those works have to be completed. I wish we did, but we don't, but we will continue to inspect this development in order to ensure that it's legally compliant. I would also just add, I understand the emotion that residents feel on this, and I'm grateful for the concern. Just a personal story, I went to their school at Lee Farm in Garthon Inverness, as they were then, and my very first school trip was a walk down Lossamas to the shops. So, you know, I share the emotional connection here, and I will, you know, as a council, we will continue to do all we can within our powers, but we have to acknowledge the limit of our powers here as a building control authority government to terrify it.
Thank you, councillor Glenn. Councillor Annalisa.
Over the last, I had some conversation with the Meriden Yorkway for the shop owners. From this conversation, again, appeared to each other, the shop owners are worried about the landlord intention. They have suffered from this work for 100 days before three months. Local politics in this case are a choice. Do they try to work soft out this problem by letting the shop owners only have a role? Or do they try to give this situation for the impact on the tax band? Crucially, the petition is related at first place on the assumption that only the four architects are okay on the empty shopkeeper. This assumption is implied, and we are the council for county council, the town, the MMR, presser, council, and workshop in the house to sort and improve this situation. The strength of this council lies in commitment and the urgent support. The struggle in this place for political gain, getting back to the dialogue, we work so hard to fight. It does get further, we are here for our residents, not as bystanders, but as active participants. And the concern are not our level, but yourself. Emotional tension has not been used for currency or influence. It is our responsibility to ground this conversation in transparency, empathy, and respect for all parties involved. Thank you.
Thank you so much, councillor. Councillor Bell.
Thank you, Chair. I wouldn't say too much, obviously others have already mentioned some of the issues. But obviously, building control, as John mentions clearly at the council, I did check with the chief executive, and she said building control has been involved over the years and is still involved, as others have said, and councillor Southbridge said. And clearly, there were general issues for local residents over the space of the building over the years, it's taken so long, and we've had issues of highways, issues there over the years as well. So I hope that as building control are monitoring, even though it's not really a council, but it's council responsibility, it's not, the planning permission is given, it's a housing trust, we should make sure that the housing trust and highways actually do respond to any genuine questions, and I'm pleased that, oh, the building control has been involved for a long time. And I just hope that they, you know, they carry on, and I'm sure local councils as well as others will, make sure that the building control and other officers on our side do do their job. I don't think we can do anything more than that, really. We take into account what you've said other than that, thank you.
Thank you. I understand that one of the members of the public raised their hand to speak. Unfortunately, we will not be able to take that. Thank you, everyone. I would now like to invite Nettie Teller to respond on behalf of the council.
Thank you, chairman. And I'll just start by saying I'm grateful to the residents and shop owners for their passion about the Meriden shops, and I also completely understand their frustration and often anger about the situation. These shops have been a key part of the local community for generations, and that must continue. I know that Watford residents and business owners have endured too much disruption as part of Watford community housing redevelopment. They have much to be angry about, a catalogue of failings and delays by Harpshire County Council, the highways authority under the previous Conservative administration. What I can't accept, however, is political parties making obviously political attempts to hijack people's emotions and concern for their own gain. Recent years have seen far too many examples of politicians who scaremonger for their own benefit and offer easy answers, which turn out to be a fantasy. I know that ward councillors and county councillors for the Meriden have worked hard to try to improve this situation. I know that Steve Cavender, the former county councillor for the division, did everything he could to knock heads together to find a resolution. The new county councillor for this area, whom we heard earlier, Emily Hill, shares this determination. This council and its leadership will always support our community and local businesses in every way that we can. It is important that local politicians like us are honest about the extent of our power, and it would be wrong to promise that we can simply fix these issues with a wave of the magic wand. I've met with the chief executive of Watford Community Housing, highways officers, and board councillors on-site outside the co-op. Over several years, there have been many meetings and emails where these concerns have been raised, and I have, of course, discussed these with local shop owners, residents, and groups such as the Meriden Residents' Association. Harp's highways and Watford community housing do need to take action to improve this situation. So I propose a follow-up meeting involving Harp's highways, Watford community housing, local councillors, the county councillor, shop owners, so that we can work collaboratively together to improve this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I would like to thank John for coming to council and presenting this petition. A written response will be sent to you, and it will also be published on the council's website. Thank you so much, and happy birthday. Urgent business. There's an urgent item of business, and I would like to hand it over to the chief operating officer. and I would like to hand it over to the Chief of Marketing Officer.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, councillors. Members are required to attend at least one meeting of the authority in a six-month period. Section eighty-five of the Local Government Act nineteen seventy-two provides that if a council member fails throughout a period of six months to attend a meeting, subject to certain exceptions, they cease to be a member of the authority. However, it is possible for the council to approve the member's non-attendance for a specified period until their term of office expires, provided that approval is given prior to the expiry of the six-month rule. It is considered good practice for local authorities to consider the circumstances of a member's absence from attendance at meetings when the six-month period is approaching. Councillor Saunders has advised that she's been able to attend any meetings recently due to a sudden and close bereavement. It is, the recommendation within the report this evening is that the Councillor Saunders be granted a waiver of six-month attendance rule in accordance with section eighty-five of the Local Government Act nineteen seventy-two until the twenty-second of October of twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. I'll move the report. Councillor Cross, I understand your seconded in recommendation.
Yes, that's right. As Deputy Group Leader of the LIDEM Group, I'd second the motion and reserve my right to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Does council agree that Councillor Saunders is granting a waiver of six months attendance rule in accordance with section eighty-five, one of the Local Government Act nineteen seventy-two, until twenty-second of October twenty twenty-five? All those four? Thank you. Against? Any abstentions? Thank you. It's carried. Renumeration of the Chair of the Museum Advisory Panel. A report on the museum public programs and collections manager has been circulated with agenda. I'm inviting Councillor Dutton to move the recommendations in the report. You have up to seven minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. I do my best to not put up seven minutes. Dear Chairman and members, this evening I bring forward a recommendation that reflects not only on good governance, but the value we hold as a council. Partners, inclusion and responsibility leadership. We are asking for you to approve to introduce a modest strategic renumeration for the Chair of the Museum Advisory Panel, a role who is central to delivering the future vision of Watford Museum. The principle of having an advisory panel is to act as a critical friend and ambassador to the museum, which has been a part of the museum transformation project since the first National Lottery Heritage funding has been grounded back to twenty twenty-two. Following research into the best practice, the concept of renumeration, the position of the Chair, was signed off by the Member Steering Group in February twenty twenty-four in advance of the second stage of the bid. The principle of renumeration was also welcomed by the National Lottery Heritage funding as the renumeration recognised the amount of work required to enable the Chair to fill their role. This is not only the process, it's the purpose. It's about ensuring that one of the Watford Museum's important cultural institutions is guided by the leadership that needs to be in a museum that welcomes, reflects and empowers every corner of our community. As part of our town hall quarter redevelopment, we have committed to transforming Watford Museum into a space that is dynamic, accessible and rooted to the life and diversity of the outgrow. As a portfolio holder, I work closely with officers and departments to shape a panel that is representative and accountable with a strong community forces at heart. The lead that panel effectively is the Chair who brings strategic overview, the confidence to challenge the guide and the time and capacity to deliver. We are now seeking approval of the level of renumeration of two thousand pounds per annum, which is based on benchmarking and on recognition of the number of hours likely to be required to undertake the role. This recommendation comes with strong endorsement by the heritage funds monitors as a good practice. This chair will be responsible not just for convening the panel, but for driving forward other ambitions around quality inclusion and community-led creation. Colleagues, this is the modest investment, fully funded, and one that sends this right message with value leadership, that we want inclusion not just in exhibitions, but at the decision-making table. And that we are serious about making Watford Museum as a place where all our residents feel seen, heard and inspired. I commend this motion to the council and ask for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a second? I understand you have seconded this recommendation.
I'm happy to second your reservation to speak.
Thank you. Do any other members wish to speak? Okay. Would you like to speak? Councillor Dutton, do you want to sum up?
I believe that we are happy with the recommendation and I'm very grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the council agree the two recommendations are scripted on the page thirty-four of the Agenda Pack? All those in favour? All those against? Any abstentions? Thank you. The recommendations are carried. Affordable housing. A report of the principal planning officer has been circulated with the agenda. I would like to invite Councillor Glenn Southbury to move the recommendations. You have up to seven minutes.
Thank you, Chair. I need seven minutes. But very pleased to bring these two documents to the council today. Co-living is relatively new form of housing that we're starting to see a lot more interest in in the town. Previously, it was focused in larger urban centres like London. So we thought it was very important to have, you know, top-level guidance and high-standard guidance to make sure that these sorts of applications educate the whole community and are of a standard that we would expect in the town. Affordable housing contributions, obviously, we all know frustrations with viabilities and the challenges around seeing affordable housing delivered in the town. So we wanted to update our guidance and our policy on how we achieve the absolute best financial outcomes, where developers submit viability assessments to meet target, includes a late-stage review where we were aimed to hopefully extract more where the viabilities have changed in the intervening period from the successful application. So I really commend these documents. Great feedback. I'd like to hand them to the officers who I know work and should be hard on them. And thank you very much.
Thank you. May I have a second, please? Thanks.
You're welcome.
Would you like to speak?
I reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. Do other members wish to speak? Councillor Bell, you have up to five minutes.
Thank you, Chair. And yeah, we support these two policies. And it's very important, obviously, co-living and ending on affordable housing. Obviously, that's relevant to our motion later on. I need to get the amendment. But overall, we support this. Anything that can increase affordable housing and makes it easier in the town from the housing point of view, we can support. And yeah, I'm sure that there was that consultation. I know that we'd be encouraged to get involved. Yeah.
Thank you, Councillor Bell. Would you like? Councillor Southbury, would you like to sum up?
Thank you. I need to welcome this outbreak of unity. But no, in seriousness, it's very, you know, delighted to see, you know, the shift policy and great of the sport for a moment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does the council agree the three recommendations are scripted on page thirty-four of the Agenda Pack? All those in favour? Yes? All those against? Any abstentions? Thank you. The recommendations are carried. Shared services, human resources. A report of the senior project manager and the minutes from cabinet have been circulated with agenda. I'm inviting Councillor Reddick to move the recommendations. You have up to seven minutes.
Thank you, Chair. I will tell council through the proposal for Watford Borough Council and St Albans City Council to proceed to a shared service offering for human resources and organisation development. This follows on from the work undertaken between the two councils last year. Both councils have remained committed to closer collaboration, especially where this strengthens our collective position in preparation for local government reform. Currently, they assess a shared service offering between Watford Borough Council and Three Rivers District Council. There is no impact either financially or from a service delivery perspective on the HR and organisational and OD service provided by Watford Borough Council to Three Rivers District Council. Watford Borough Council will continue to be the lead authority in the service offering to Three Rivers District Council and to St Albans District Council. The business case for a shared HR OD service with St Albans District Council is not driven by a financial say-in. The main driver of the business case is to ensure that each council is better placed to collectively support the workforce issues and opportunities that arise from LGR. Uniting our two teams will allow us to build and pool expertise, increase resilience and share insights. The business case does recognise that there will be opportunities to deliver efficiencies from areas such as joint recruitment and contract alignment, but these are not the main drivers of the business case. A programmatic approach is proposed to the implementation of the business case, which will lift and shift staff roles from St Albans District Council to Watford Borough Council with minimal change except to some reporting lines. This approach will enable the two teams to come together at the earliest opportunity and start work and preparing for LGR. In addition, no changes are being proposed to the existing HR and OD budgets at this time. I ask council to approve this proposal.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
Yes.
Who is the second then? Okay. Would you like to speak?
I reserve my right to speak.
Do any members wish to speak? Okay. Councillor Bell.
Oh, all right.
Anyone else first?
Okay, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, I agree with the shared services. We issued it out for three rivers during about eight years on our seat. But overall, I agree with shared services. And as long as we've got some sort of scrutiny option to come back and we're obviously going to use it that. But it's interesting that Councillor Rodriguez uses the LGR as one of the reasons in setting it for fairness for LGR. So that's interesting. But I'll be around the end of it and all. So that's interesting. But overall, yeah, I think if it's with the residents and if we can get the proper scrutiny, then, yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's very brief. But that's the opinion assessment to Councillor Rodriguez in shared services portfolio and the great advocate for good shared services based on service level agreements, whether it's clarity of both sides as to what is to be provided and what is to be, what is the return format and each party understands their goals and expectations. I welcome this because clarity is everything in this area, and I'm delighted that we've managed to achieve that. And I hope it works well in the short term as the project continues.
Thank you. Councillor Rodgill, would you like to sum up? Anyone else would you like to?
No.
Thank you, Chair. In response to Nigel's comments, I would like to say that there is governance in terms of, in terms of the, in terms of the proposal. There is a shared service board which offices are on, and offices will basically review the progress of the shared service implementation in St Albans. And again, it will be reviewed by portfolio officers.
Thank you. Does the council agree the recommendations are scripted in the Agenda Pack on page one four two? All those in favour? Thank you. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you. The recommendation is carried. Financial monitoring report. A report of the chief finance officer has been circulated with the agenda. And the minutes of cabinet on seven July have been circulated to all members by email and published online. I'm inviting Councillor Graham to move the recommendation. You have up to seven minutes.
Thank you, Chair. So this outturn report sets out the council's financial position for the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five financial year-end. The report was presented to the Finance Scrutiny Committee and subsequently to the Cabinet. And today, I've outlined the proposed four recommendations as set out in the report to councils. But before I do that, I just wanted to reinforce a couple of things that we've not only discussed at Finance Scrutiny, but we've also raised at Cabinet as well. From a revenue perspective, the council finished the financial year with a variance against budget of eight hundred and forty-four thousand. When compared to the information I reported earlier in the year to councillors' app period ten of the financial year, overall, there was a small movement of up nineteen thousand from the forecast year-end position reported at that point in time. The financial position was largely driven by demand-led services, such as providing temporary accommodation to people who require support from the council. Protecting residents and families from being homeless through temporary accommodation is not only the right thing to do, but absolutely sits at the heart of Watford's purpose. This is a challenge faced by councils across the county, across the country in apologies, as a result of the national housing crisis. The council has a duty to assist individuals and families who are homeless or threatened with homelessness. The expenditure in this area has been highlighted in the Financial Monitoring Report to councillors throughout the inn. We also saw a finance scrutiny and the housing team coming in and do an overview of the challenges, but also some of the great work that they put in place. And I just wanted to say not only thank you to that team as well, but I think it really gave all of our councils and our members our finance scrutiny the opportunity just to understand some of the background and also some of the work that we're putting into place moving that forward. And to finally cover off, other variances have been escalated by an increased return on investments due to higher interest rates and cash balances than estimated, as well as a drawdown from reserves. From a capital perspective, the total capital program spent for the year was twenty-one point six million, with main deliverables being spent on the town hall quarter and affordable housing. The six point one million underspent against in-year budget will be replaced to the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six budget. As of thirty-first of March two thousand and twenty-five, the council's reserve balance remains robust with a total revenue reserve of over eighty million. This includes seventy-eight million earmarked reserves in addition to corporate general reserves totaling two point one seven million. These reserves help to ensure the council remain resilient in the face of nationwide, nationwide pressures and most importantly, continue delivering high-quality services and support our residents depend on. I also just want to say thank you to all members in the Finance Scrutiny Committee and the councillors, because we had a really good, healthy debate. The Chair of the Finance and Scrutiny as well for their feedback as well and all the officers involved in the report. And with that in mind, I'd like to propose the four recommendations I set out in the report to council. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Please, may I have a second?
I second this report and reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak? You have up to five minutes. Councillor Khan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What I would like to do, I think it's important for my
As I have been turning over to the council, she thanks for Hockman and councillor Clark Taylor as chair and vice-chair in the previous year during this period. And we go forward hoping to continue or intending to continue robust oversight so that the council's resources and stewardship of its resources remains healthy. We had in the previous agenda items, some by no means all, challenges that we face, and all the committee has an important role in overseeing that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I understand councillor Oliver would like to second this.
Yes. I'm happy to second this report and then reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. If any member wants to speak, you have up to five minutes. Okay. Councillor Khan.
Thank you as well. I've been a long-term member of the Audit Committee as the first, one of the first committees I first came on 14 years ago. The chairs have been really good, very open, and so we're looking forward to working within as well. We've worked previously, but as the Chair of the Audit Committee is absolutely right, it's a really important part in making sure that we understand the risks that are affecting the council, its decisions and processes in place. But also just saying actually, a key member of the Audit Committee is our independent member who plays a really good view actually, and he's avoidant politician, comes in, looks at it, and actually does throw the old googly using the cricket analogy. And perhaps India's lacking a googly. And you're in cricket, who on Sunday, on Piers, played this week. But it's important that it plays its role. Like the finance group here, Audit Committee plays a really important role in looking at those sort of bigger projects, sort of policies and so on. I think, again, I would say, again, as at the previous point, it's a great and good Audit Committee, helps a council run its business properly. And that's one of the key things about this administration which should continue. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councillor Oliver, do you want to speak?
No, I can do.
Councillor Shaw, you have to stop.
Yes, I will stop and acknowledge that ten, I'm afraid, ten councillor and councillor Khan puts me to shame there because that was one thing that I didn't intend to mention was that our new, who's having an independent member of the committee. And that is very important for the effectiveness of functioning. There is, again, as I said at the start, there is a danger, I'm sure it's not the case with members of the committee who have passed here, but there is a danger of the Audit Committee being a kind of sideshow. And also remembering that you have laypeople in general asking quite technical questions about the work in the council and the council's finances. So it's very important we do make use of what is now the requirement to have an independent member. I really think we have made a council to be commended on its choice of Garmeen Palmer, who has been very helpful to me just in preparing for my first meeting and his contributions at the meeting. And he's somebody who has the interest of the town apart, who is somebody, who's a local person, who is involved in the community in many ways, as well as bringing his professional expertise to the community. And the last thing I'd take is, I think this is important, and I know that in the past the relevant cabinet member has attended, that is very important too, because it's important that the executive function is seen to take this committee seriously. I was pleased that Shaun came to our first meeting this musical year, and I'm grateful for that. And hopefully there will be this constructive, challenging, constructive and working together between executive and Audit Committee as we go forward.
Thank you. Does the council agree the annual reports as printed in the agenda card of the 180? All those in favour?
Agreed.
Thank you. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you. The recommendations are valid. So now we move to motions. But before we move on to the motions, I would like to remind everyone that there's a further report at the end of the agenda. So today's business will not end with motions, that's what I'm saying. That means that we need to be efficient with the time that we use in motions, because we still have another agenda item. So this has been included at this point in case we need to exclude requests and public. I will explain this in more detail when we get to them. So motions, three motions has been received, all that procedural 19.0. We go through them in order of receipt by the Democratic Assembly's amendment. I would like to remind all councillors that the mover of the motion has up to seven minutes with a right of reply for up to three minutes. Everyone else has up to five minutes and they only speak once. So the first motion has been proposed by councillor Bell and seconded by councillor Suleman. Details are contained in the agenda. I would now invite councillor Bell to move the motion that you have up to seven minutes.
Thank you, Chair. And I can also see the Liberal Democrat amendment, and I also would accept that. You've got to do that. Political, just so we can get our... On our original motion, which is still there, over half a million additional pupils will become eligible for free school meals under the new criteria. And the key point is that all households receiving universal credit above the current 7,000 pound county income cap will qualify for this support, and that's the key thing. Now, we're supporting this new eligibility now to give time for schools and families and organisations to prepare for September 26th, recognising schools will need more time to prepare for the extra meals provided. We need to do all we can to support our Watford families locally to prepare for next year, recognising there are still those who don't, who won't apply. We welcome the significant financial relief for families if a household receives universal credit, they could save up to £495 per year for a child on school lunches. And of course, for families with nautical children, these savings can make a major change to a household budget. We want our Watford families to be fully signed up if they qualify to give them the best chance in life, understanding how this will ensure they receive additional nutrition during school hours, and it will therefore support their learning and concentration in class, and of course, better physical health and mental wellbeing. And the fact that it could potentially lift a hundred thousand out of poverty nationally by the end of this parliament. This will add to the Labour Government's other policies to combat child poverty, including pre-veg scrubs in primary schools, the expanded government fund of childcare, and the cap on branded school uniform items. And obviously, I respect that at the bottom of the Liberal Amendment, they're talking about capping uniform costs to further support learning policy, the same sort of things we've done. And they say about committing to auto-enrolling eligible children for free school meals as soon as possible, the same sort of thing we've already got there. So the other, only other issues is there, your first three points in red at the beginning, I have to make the political stuff about 2013, one of the positive things you were saying came from the Liberal Tory coalition, but all right, we'll accept that beginning in here. And you put pressure on this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was before, you know, before that amendment. But this was initially voted down by the government, or like you say, in '25, but I see that you've now, the government, accepted in June '25. So fair enough, but obviously the acceptable amendment, so if you get this through, I'm sure we might be on this as well. Thank you, Chair.
Well done.
Thank you. Can I please, in private, councillor Sir Man, to second? I'm pleased to second this motion. The cost of living crisis continues to beat families hard. Every day we hear from parents doing their very best, but still struggling to cover the bases, including putting food on the table when families are faced, forced to choose between eating and eating. We know that impact is felt most deeply by children. The upcoming extension of free school meals eligibility is not just about the policy, it is a lifetime for up to 5,690 children in Watford, which means they are guaranteed a free meal in school every day. For families, it means around £500 a year saved money, that can go towards other essentials like brand clothing or utility bills. Nationally lifting 100,000 children out of poverty is a step in the right direction, but we have to make sure that it becomes a reality locally. We must make sure every eligible child actually receives this support, that means raising awareness and making the process simple for families. This motion sets out a practical and compassionate way forward. It recognises that council, schools and communities all have a role to play in helping families by working with partners, launching a wellness campaign and making sure no eligible child is involved or goes hungry in school. This motion rightly puts a word on the front foot, ensuring we are ready to deliver for our children. I fully support it, I second this motion, and I request my colleagues to support this motion.
Before we move on, I want to inform the House that the amendment is not a substantive motion. Does anyone wish to speak on the motion? Okay. Thank you. Councillor Bashir?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to speak on a motion brought forward by colleagues regarding the extension of free school meals. Let me absolutely, sorry, let me absolutely be clear from the outset. Liberal Democrats have heartily supported the principle behind this motion, ensuring that no child goes hungry during school day, sorry, during school day is not just a good policy, it's a moral imperative. We, of course, welcome any expansion of free school meals that helps support families whose cost of living price is here in Watford and of course nationally. But let's also be honest about where this policy originated. The idea that Labour is now championing free school meal for primary children was not born in their manifesto or in their benches, it was introduced by the Liberal Democrats under the nickname when he was in government. It was our policy, it was our fight, it was our success, one against opposition and scepticism at the time, including from some very people now trying to claim credit for it. In 2013, 2014, we rolled out universal free school meals for all infant pupils in England, the biggest expansion of free school meals in generations. That just didn't happen by accident, it was because the Lib Dems made it a priority when in government. Since then, the situation has become even more urgent. According to the latest government figures, over two million children in England, around 1 in 4 pupils are now eligible for free school meals. That's the highest proportion since records began, and yet hundreds of thousands of children in poverty still don't qualify under the current eligibility criteria. Now, I don't want to make this about fiscal point scoring, but when a motion like this comes forward presenting the expansion of eligibility criteria for free school meals as some new visionary Labour initiative, without a single acknowledgement of the groundwork laid by others, that's not just disingenuous, it's disrespectful to children and families that we've helped since 2013, 2014. Lib Dems have continued support on the expansion of free school meals, driving towards children empowerment. Much of the opposition of this government, if you just give me the courtesy to be heard, until it was virtually accepted by them in June 2025. This council and this chamber should be a place for honest debate and collaborative action, not an arena for rewriting history. If Labour is serious about improving outcomes for children, let's work together, and let's also give priority to you. The Lib Dems were leading on this issue when others were still dithering, and we're still leading on it now by pushing for fairer funding, greater access and support that goes beyond the school gates. If Labour's really serious about helping children and vulnerable families and by lifting them out of poverty, why not address the two child cap placement families receiving universal credit? Or remove the unfair welfare pass target, the most vulnerable peoples in our communities receiving PIB? Or support the pensioners who are so cruelly targeted with the removal of winter fuel allowance, or we've done another embarrassing utopia on this disastrous policy? If Labour is serious about helping children, let's work together on a cross-parking basis. But let's be clear, we led the way on free school meals, we're still leading the way by calling for the expansion of eligibility, regardless of income, and by pushing for automatic registration so no eligible child goes through the frack. So yes, let's extend free school meals, let's protect our most vulnerable children, and let's do it with honesty, humility and a clear understanding of who's already, who's already leading on this policy to make a difference for our children, the families. It's all the arrows on my waist.
Oh, yeah. Hypocacy. Humility. Where are you going to go now?
Genocide, just like it was. They don't like it. Beautiful. That's your way down, bro.
Thank you, Chair. I have not even attempted to sort of follow the same, I just wanted a very simple point. I am the Governor of the Office for Education and County, and one of the biggest challenges we have is bridging the gap between those who are people who are struggling to be able to afford to eat, to have their children properly fed, going to school. The one point I really want to stress, because I absolutely endorse the auto-enrolling of children into free school meals, if every child can just take that as a matter of right, that will be translatable. And for that reason particularly, I am delighted to support our motion, or at least our amendment to the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I will now like to invite councillor Bell to exercise his right of the flag. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you, Chair. And as I say, I accepted the amendment, so, you know, I wasn't particularly going to make any political points, as I say, but you're, this is the Liberal Democrat stuff from 2013 and obviously, well, that's fine, because I just want to put that in so that we've got it through. It's only unfortunately councillor Bashir will be making his, unfortunately, part of the political points. You're talking about humility.
It's the truth.
Yeah, the truth. You then were a Labour councillor at the time, or you were Labour supporter, I was only a member of 2013, I think, I don't know if you were. Just before you...
No, it wasn't a Labour councillor, so you got your facts wrong again.
No, that's fine.
A bit like the simple...
I don't want to get my facts wrong, but if anyone's got an act of humility, surely you, you're the person across the floor.
I wasn't a Labour councillor.
We've got Liberal Democrat leadership, when you were councillor in Talleyrand, you know, and you did nothing. And that was from the Liberal Democrats, about you doing nothing when you were councillor in Talleyrand. So when it comes to humanity...
It's embarrassing.
No, not embarrassing, you're the embarrassing person, but when you cross the floor, you're very... Overall care, overall care, as I said, I support...
When all the people attacked by the opposition, it's completely gone off topic, it's completely lost its track.
As I said, I support the Liberal Democrat amendment, quite happy to support it, and I'm pleased that hopefully we get this through for the whole party, for the whole council. Thank you, Chair. Don't take the camera, take calm down.
Can I invite my pastor to put on the amended motion, please? All those in favour, please, Chair? Thank you. All those against? Is anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you. The motion is carried, thank you. The second question. Calling on Watford Borough Council to use a new social affordable housing programme. Please, do we have one house? Calling on Watford Borough Council to use a new social affordable housing programme to deliver urgently needed social rent homes here in our town. This second motion has been proposed by councillor Khan and seconded by councillor Bell. And I invite councillor Khan to move the motion. You have up to seven minutes, please.
Seven minutes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I humbly propose this motion, which calls on Watford Borough Council to use a social affordable home homes programme to deliver urgently needed social rent homes here in our town. Because this motion is about more than bricks and mortar, it's about fairness, it's about security, it's about opportunity, and ultimately it's about decency in how we treat the people of Watford. Chair, let's certainly clear about the scale of the challenge. Watford faces a real growing housing crisis, it isn't a hyperbolic, it is experienced by residents every day. We see it in our dog walking, in our surgeries, in boxes, more than water, in our budgets as well, as we mentioned earlier today. We know average private rents in this borough have been unaffordable for men, a two-bedroom flat routinely costs £1300 to £1400 a month, sometimes more. This, as I said, is beyond reach for too many key workers, families, civil parents. Older people are known for lower wages and the result, residents forced into poor quality or overpriced accommodation, people pushed out of Watford altogether, away from their friends, their families and jobs, worse, still an increasing number of presenting to the council as homeless. Chair, let's look at the costs on spending, on temporary accommodation, a spiral, we've just seen in the budget papers as well. Because when people have nowhere to go, the council has a legal duty, likely so, to house them. But we also know it's an expensive, unsatisfactory, often unsuitable option, it drains our budgets, it absorbs money from other services, it delivers poor outcomes for those families, especially children growing up in B and Bs or likely paid accommodation. This is not sustainable, it's not fair and it's not right. Chair, this is what social, this is why social rent matters. This is the most truly affordable form of housing, not affordable in name, only at 80% of market rent, but generally affordable, typical around 50% or 60% of market rent. It provides security of tenure, enables families to plan, put down roots, invest in their children's future, it keeps local workers in our town, it teaches assistants, carers, NHS staff, retail workers, delivery drivers, the people who keep Watford going. If we don't prioritise social rents, we are effectively saying Watford is only for those who can outbid everyone else. That's not the kind of town that we all aspire, it shouldn't be. And Chair, the government itself has recognised the need, and they have announced the new social and affordable houses programme with a target of 60% of social rent. This is a clear invitation and obligation for councils to step up and deliver. This is a national policy that recognises crisis, the crisis, and let's be honest, Whitehall won't deliver for it. They won't deliver it for us, it's up to us to make it happen here in Watford. And far too developers will choose social rents on their market and on their own. Left of the market, they won't, they'll offer the bare minimum, the wrong kind of affordable housing, the shared ownership, that's either too expensive, so-called affordable, that still locks people into poverty. That's why this motion matters, gets a council, it says that this council won't be passive. The council will use the programme actively, the council will negotiate, the council will plan, the council will partner with housing associations, the council will make sure Watford gets its fair share of that funding and it goes where it's truly needed. Because every time we let another large scheme through with no social rents, or with a certain handful, we are signing up for more years of pressure on our homelessness budgets. More families in limbo, more children with no stable home, more people forced to leave Watford because they simply can't afford to stay. Madam Chair, I want to be clear, the motion is not anti-development, quite the opposite, we need new homes, but we need the right homes, homes that meet real local needs, homes that can actually, people can afford, homes that keep our communities mixed, balanced and sustainable. If we get this right, the benefits are enormous, we reduce our homelessness bill, we spend, we cut spending on temporary accommodation, we keep families to thrive, we make Watford a fairer place to live, and we show leadership, providing that councils can drive real positive change. Madam Chair, there's also a financial case, every town that we invest in social rent saves us pounds on up in the long term, it reduces pressure on social services, on health, on education, stable housing means better health outcomes, better education attainment for children, stronger or resilient communities. It's not just morally right, it's economically smart. Madam Chair, I want to say to colleagues of all sizes, this is not a partisan argument, this is about recognising shared responsibility. We are elected to represent all of Watford, that includes the people on our housing list, includes the 20-something forced-to-live parents, the 20-something forced-to-live parents in their 30s, the single mother working two jobs, but still unable to pay a private landlord, the pensioners worried about rent increases and eviction. They deserve to know we are on their side. This motion is our chance to say, we see you, we hear you, and we will act. We will not pretend that this is someone else's problem, we will not wait for the market to solve it, we will use every tool at our disposal, including the new government programme, to deliver the homes Watford actually needs. Madam Chair, to conclude, I believe we can, can and should do better, I think Watford should be a town that everyone can afford to call home, that is what this motion is about, that's why I'm proud to propose it tonight, I ask all councillors, whatever their party, to come together and support this, and I'm also willing to accept the amendment for this motion, so we can come together and work on this particular area.
Thank you. And I invite councillor Bell to second the motion, you have up to five minutes.
Thank you, Chair. I second the amended motion and reserve my rights.
Does anyone else wish to speak on the motion?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you to Labour for accepting our amendment. I think the first thing to say is that we kind of, sometimes I think, just deliberately say we've got housing prices, and as members, absolutely gratitude for that, really hits us sometimes. I was recently walking from the leisure centre, which you can see outside of that window, to this building, chugging it out of my way, and my brother up, and someone beckons to come and speak to me, and he came over, and him and his wife both worked locally, had two young children at local schools, and pretty much started crying because of the increase in their private rent and the fear that they just couldn't afford to live in Watford anymore. I'm sure lots of us have had similar experiences, right? This is something that causes people huge levels of anxiety, huge concern, and it is a crisis that needs dramatic action on both council and national government level. I would say, I think one of the things, I mean, I agree with lots of what councillor Khan said, but the one thing I disagree, just when he said that we, our committees sometimes just lets another scheme through without affordable or social units. And to be really clear, we have an imperfect market, an imperfect system at the moment, and we do our best in those imperfect situations to deliver for our residents as many affordable social units as we can possibly get. We deliver them in partnership with Watford Community Housing. Over the last four years, we've built 880, over 880 affordable social units. I want to do more, of course I do, every scheme that comes forward, I want to see as many affordable social units as possible. The good news is they're going to be giving us money, the same is going to be 38 billion, I think, in the spending review. That's good, but we also need the powers. I think too often what they say is that actually, panicking committees have less power, somehow this would all be better. I think we need local communities to have more power to influence it, not less power, and actually we need to make some other changes, change the fact we've got a market dominated by really big developers who play in the system for their own advantage. We should also change viability rules, that to, you know, we do our best in that system, but actually too often developers use viability to get out delivering those affordable units. So I welcome the fact you've accepted this, I think all of us want to make sure we've got affordable houses for our local communities. It's not easy, but we need the powers, we need the money, they're going to be making the right noises, and councils like Watford want to work with them to deliver the rest
Councillor Scott?
Thank you, Chair. Right, it is very commendable that the motion has been brought forward and that the amendment is accepted, so we are in a position of consensus, this is a very important issue, and it is good to have as much agreement as possible. And it certainly isn't something that I would like to do to in any way break the consensus, but as somebody who has had some hand in developing policy over the years and sitting actually... and sitting actually delivering or voting on planning applications that will actually implement those policies, you know, I do have some kind of thoughts on this. And what it is, anybody who went to the development management training recently that's been told about, that the slide that had been shown about the level of affordable housing and that not, thirty-five percent of zero is zero. We can't just have, it's not just about having policies, it's actually about giving permission for housing. And that's sometimes where councillors dare say tonight, I mention no need. I offer this as an abstract lecture rather than pointing the finger at anybody in any way. But where councillors, for example, found claims of opposition to development, which includes affordable housing, you know, that can stop the supply of affordable and social housing. Failing to support developments that do deliver, that are plan compliant and do deliver affordable housing and social housing, because they don't quite fit to tick this box or that box or they are in some way fall short of absolute perfection, that's another way in which affordable housing gets sabotaged. And dare I say, failing to support a local plan which is designed to proper fasten policies which deliver necessary levels of affordable housing after, you know, after we've been through a detailed policy process in order to deliver those things. Those are, dare I say, traps that politicians can fall into so that they, while they are in principle committed to delivering more affordable housing, can sometimes fail to do so or sabotage it. This is a very important area and I think, thanks for the summary, the two planning documents that were brought forward together are symptom of that. That you're having graduates living in and people, you know, on relatively good incomes who only hope of getting housing if they can't access social or affordable housing, while having to live in effect slightly outmarket student residents' accommodation. We're having, you know, we're having to nip and tuck about how we get, make sure that we get contributions to planning, to social housing, where it's impossible or where we can't deliver them on site and then fight with the developers to try and do a late review in order to capture value for social and affordable housing. I have to say, when my parents moved to Watford nearly fifty years ago now, it still was a very expensive area compared to where we had moved from in Scotland, but it still was essentially possible for two people working to access housing on the private market either renting or buying. It also was possible for people working in, you know, relatively moderately remunerated jobs to put themselves on the housing register with some expectation that at some point they would get to the top of the list and would be hammers. I know it's something that the previous mayor, the current mayor, and probably all administrations have shared, is to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to live in Watford. That means that we have to be committed to delivering affordable housing, not just in principle, but actually in voting and how we manage development in that.
Thank you, I'm very little now glad that I'm riding on the hot stuff with my more elusive colleagues here, but it's good to have you back here. I just wanted, just wanted, for our move this amendment, I'm very grateful to Labour for accepting it, continuing the outbreak of unity that we've seen here, did right. We just wanted to highlight, I mean, it's an extremely difficult, everybody's covered this, but extremely difficult and increasingly difficult environment to deliver affordable housing. This is why our local plan explicitly prioritises affordable housing, sorry, explicitly prioritises social housing within the affordable housing element. It doesn't necessitate very difficult decisions in the face of strong opposition. We saw that at the development of Russell Hame, that delivered fourteen social rent family-sized homes, which, you know, will be a lifeline to people in desperate need. So commend this amendment and very grateful for your support, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bell, would you like to speak?
Yeah, there's no one else to compete here. And in the spirit of unity that everyone's going on tonight, thanks for the summary. I'll carry on certainly, yeah. Welcome to the amendment and I welcome a lot of the points councillor Sharp made. I think I wasn't answered, you might be, Mr. Smith, but I do understand what you're getting at, maybe it's quite right. But this motion is of course due to the Chancellor's generation announcing changes, sorry, general, in the spending review for the thirty-nine million nationally spread over the next ten years. Spending to each four billion per year in twenty-nine thirty and then rising to twenty-one thirty. And it's groundbreaking, I know many commentators, housing experts from across the spectrum have set the most significant policy announcement on housing and affordability for over fifty years. Homes for social rent will be prioritised and other tenures like affordable rent and shared ownership will also be included, which obviously include Portcrust and Watford. Of course, back in March, the government also announced two billion in grant funding as a down payment on a future Affordable Homes Programme to support the delivery of new social and affordable homes. And apparently that funding will be delivered on the same terms as the current Affordable Homes Programme. And so it'd be prioritised for homes for social rent, which is always something we support and, you know, it's young people. But what, you know, you all said tonight in the early hour debates as well. Although it'll be accompanied by a start-on-site deadline of March two thousand and twenty-seven, a project will be finished by June twenty-nine. Now this is where for Watford, our important partnership, as others have said, with Watford Council, Housing Trust, so important, and obviously good connection with Homes England and other small housing associations and developers, obviously, that we've got here. And as an example, the new Supported Living Apartments announced by the County Council yesterday, as obviously the mayor will know, in conjunction with Watford Council Housing Trust with the County Council in Green Lane, Bushy, Watford, you know, obviously Bushy. This shows the right long-term thinking by the Chancellor and Deputy Prime Minister on housing growth and we welcome this for Watford and I'm sure it will be a canter with us, with the council for the future on housing. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Bell, would you like to sign your last of the flag?
I would, thank you. I mean, just to, my mother, my father's been here since the sixties. My mother came here in nineteen seventy-five, just before I was born, about fifty years ago. And lived in rented accommodation in Gladstone Road. And lived there for a bit of time and then I think I was about to come along and they're on the housing list, and a lot of that time, they got their council house over in Ameridam. Ameridam and so on. And actually, I think those are the history about, you know, being born. So my mum came over, cousins, you know, lovely, we had a really close-knit family, you know, event. And, you know, and as a family that came in, you know, we benefited from that presence of housing, rent, social housing, and we moved on and eventually, you know, we bought the house, et cetera. You know, so that was great and that's an opportunity, fantastic opportunity that we got here. And I'm sure we're forward, you, one of the most heartacheing caseworks we get is housing issues. Each and every one of us, where families get split up, we leave the schools and so on. And one of the key motivators for us, you know, for this motion was, you've got to sort it out. And it's, you know, I think as much as we can within our own realm, and you know, councillor Sharp, you know, sometimes I do grumble about a particular development, I haven't built enough social housing and so on, et cetera. And these are arguments that we have in because, you know, we do it for a particular reason. And for me, the passion is that, you know, what I benefit from in this town, in this community, is what I want to see the next generation, the future generations to develop. And, you know, the other bits are financial improvement, all of those, but fundamentally, it's about the next generation and what we can offer them, this generation offer our next generation. And this is what this is about, thank you.
Thank you. Can I invite members to vote on the amended motion, this is not the subject of the vote. All those who think of please, sure. Thank you. All those against? Thank you. Any objections? Thank you. The motion is carried, thank you. So on the last one now. Standing with Watford's disabled residents against PIP cuts. This motion has been proposed by councillor Dutton, as suggested by councillor Hill. I would now invite councillor Bell to the motion, we have up to seven minutes.
Thank you. Dear Chairman, elected mayor, tell councillors and residents, tonight I'm not just going to speak on policy, but I'm to speak for the people of Watford who might never stand out of this chamber, who might never feel out a consultation for, but who feel the consequences of our science every day. Let me tell you about Angela, our Watford resident. Angela is in her mid-fifties. She has severe pyelitis, struggles with mobility and suffers daily from chronic pain. She used to work at the Asta on Santa Bon Road, but had to stop after her condition worsened. Had had small independence payment or PIP. A lot had to save in her flat, pay for mobility scooter and a full occasionally help with the clinic. That small allowance was her independence. It was her dignity. But earlier this year, Angela was reassessed under the government's new independence PIP scoring system. Despite medical letters, she was given a score of just three points. Not because her condition improved, but because the system changed. She was told she no longer could run. Angela came to our criticism advice in tears. They helped her submit a mandatory reconsideration, which was denied. She is now waiting for tribunal, a process that could take months, with no support in the meantime. And Angela is not alone. The government passed the Universal Credit and Personal Independence Payment Bill following numerous revisions and widespread concerns on the second of July, twenty twenty-five. The government's previously welcomed reform proposal included removing eligibility for those currently in receipt of the PIP if they scored under four points. In Watford, one thousand seven hundred people received the standard daily living rate of PIP. Two thousand received the enhanced rate. Under the government's now passed proposal, eighty-seven percent of standard rate claimants like Angela would never lost their entitlement along together of those scoring rules had gone uncharged. That's not reform, that's abandonment. Scope UK tell us that disabled households pay on average one thousand ninety-five pounds in extra monthly costs just to live with dignity. That's not just number, that's the spare lift, a carer, a wheelchair accessible taxi. That's what these cars are taking away. So I ask you, colleagues, what kind of town do we want Watford to be? Are we a town that tells people like Angela that independence is too expensive? Or are we a town that stands with our disabled neighbourhood loudly, proudly and publicly? I'm asking to promote and raise concerns. We raise our voices. Citizen Advice Watford has seen firsthand the devastating impact that changes disability benefits like PIP can have on local people. Many of their clients face severe physical and mental health challenges and whether their support is cut or denied, it's not just a financial issue. It affects their independence, dignity and wellbeing. Watford Liberal Democrats believes that the government has caused unnecessary stress and hurt to disabled community in Watford and we are not accepting their input. Watford residents that require support should receive help. PIP payment allows disabled people to live independent, dignified lives. Welfare reform should not come at the expenses of people that need support. Welfare reform should focus on sustainable, long-term outcomes and put people first. Watford Council calling for elected mayor to write to the Secretary of State for Warden Pension, expressing the council's grave concerns about the impact of those changes, urging them to reverse the bill and ask for assurance about what support will remain in place for those who need it the most. To write to Watford MP, urging him to call on the government to reverse this cruel welfare cut, advocate for long-term welfare reform, which puts people first, and explain to local residents why he voted for this cut. Shocking. I will bring the quote from Watford Citizen Advice just in the recent weeks. We are deeply concerned about how the proposed changes to disability benefits will affect Watford residents. Fifty-three percent of the people who we support have a disability or long-term health condition rising to sixty-one percent of those seeking benefits advice. Cuts to disability benefits risk pushing people into poverty and further away from work. The strain is already visible. We issued fifty-five percent more for vouchers to April twenty twenty-five compared to April twenty twenty-four, with fifty percent going to people with disability or long-term health conditions. Finished the call. Dignity is not a luxury, it's a right. And we will not leave it by taking from the people of Watford without a fight. We will continue to advocate for fair policy that protects the most vulnerable in our community. We cannot fix everything tonight, but we can stand together. We can speak for Angela and persons like her in the town. We can be the voice of compassion in a system that too often forgets what compassion looks like. Thank you.
I would now invite councillor Hill to step on the motion, we have up to five minutes, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to start by thanking councillor Dutton for her heartfelt speech, particularly hard to pass the circumstances of our residents and in particular Angela. I think she really brought you across beyond a financial issue, so just thank her for that. The proposed bill from the government would have been devastating for a large number of Watford residents. Even forty-nine of their own MPs could not support these far-reaching and damaging cuts. The version this bill has been passed will still have an impact and no cause people to feel uncertainty and vulnerability that changes something like PIT gives you guys balance of books without considering the human cost. I was proud to hear about Liberal Democrats' contribution, MPs' contribution to this debate. In particular, I want to highlight a contribution from Chittle MP Tom Morrison, who said, how society treats its most vulnerable members is a real reflection of its progression and intent. And despite recent few turns and last minute changes, people, including children, will be pushed into poverty because of this bill. Tonight, we've already had two motions taken by the colleagues to help with the cost of living crisis. This is another element, making sure that people are able to live, as councillor Dutton said, with PIT payments making tangible difference to people's quality of life. Thank you.
Are there any funds that Labour group are moving an amendment to this motion, which has been circulated to members? Tonight, I want on councillor Bell to propose the amendment.
Thank you, Chair. And obviously, I know all the comments of those who went before. Although I wasn't quite sure councillor Dutton seemed to be talking about what would have gone through if the original proposal for the second of July, I'm sure that's the first reading, but I think, as I think we now all respect, it was last week, the ninth of July. It didn't include what was going to be done on the second of July, so, you know, I'm certainly pleased that that didn't happen. I think rightly, it might be the government, Watford, to listen to many of their MPs, the organisations and carers, and most importantly, those who received it. And they did the then, quite right. And they had to take on key concerns and that's that key legal requirement for co-production with disabled people. And I think that's the key thing, a formal consultation and those measurable targets for disability employment support before any future PIT changes can be made. So I think that's the important thing, that no PIT changes will go ahead now until we have that now legal requirement for co-production with disabled people. The change to be widely welcomed and trying to build that important consensus going forward in trying to have more disabled people need to work and reassuring those who cannot work. And I think that's the key thing, that's a big thing to start. But I'm certainly, my personal point of view, and then yes, on the Labour side, I'm pleased that the original proposals which I think you argued about denied didn't go through on the 2nd. And I hope now that this agreement, consensus with the disabled group mean that now there is a change of heart, that has been changed heartily. So I support our amendment and thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Khan, would you like to second the amendment?
Yes, I do, members.
Thank you. Councillor Barton, do you accept the amendments?
No, I don't.
Are there any other amendments, please? Okay. So we'll move forward to debate the original motion and the amendments. Does anyone wish to speak on the motion then? Thank you. Can I call on councillor Barton?
Thank you very much, Chair. And I'll try my best not to upset councillor Bell on this occasion. I'm not sure how successful I will be, but I'll certainly try my best. So I'm speaking today in strong support of this motion because what was proposed concerning what still remains in this bill for disabled people in Watford across the country, there's nothing short of a national disgrace. Let's be clear, first-line independence payment isn't some generous extra handout by the state. It's a lifeline. It's how disabled people cover the extra unavoidable costs that come with living with disability. Things like getting to work, paying for specialist equipment, funding care and support. Things that allow people to live with dignity, as councillor Agger said, with independence and to have some control over their own lives. But this government has chosen once again to file the books on the facts of the most vulnerable. Despite warnings, protests, expert advice, they pushed through the National Universal Credit and PIT bill on the 2nd of July. This isn't welfare reform, this is a direct attack on disabled people's ability to live their lives fully. Councillor Agger's already given the figures, but let's just reiterate them. Seventeen hundred people received standard daily living rate of PIT in Watford. Two thousand people received enhanced rate. According to their stats, 80% of those with standard rate would have been cut off under the previous proposal. That's not a small administrative change. That's nearly 1,500 people in Watford alone facing the threat of losing the support they're desperate to buy off. And for what? To shave a few pounds off the balance sheet, to meet a headline target. We know that disabled households face over £1,000 in extra monthly cost just to reach the same standard of living as everyone else. How do you justify taking away their support when those costs remain real, constant and crushing? This council must not sit on the sidelines. We must ask our elected mayor to write to the Secretary of State and demand not just reassurances but action, repeal this bill, stop these cuts and commit to real, meaningful reform that puts people, not politics first. And we must ask our elusive MP for Watford to explain his position. He voted for this bill and he owes Watford residents that explanation, not spin, not excuses and answer. Because real people will suffer, real lives will be impacted. So let's be clear in our message, this council stands with Watford's disabled residents. We believe in fairness, we believe in dignity and we will not be complicit in this cruelty. I urge every councillor, whatever party you represent, support this motion and send a clear message that Watford will not stand by while this out-of-touch Labour government targets the most vulnerable in our communities. Very finally, can I finish? And I thank my friend Agger for a very powerful and very moving speech and bringing this motion. Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Williams.
Well. Well, I don't know where to start. I wasn't planning to speak, but I sat here and listened to my colleague Angela, the issue she's going through, and not only Angela's going through this. I don't know what this Labour government is doing to our residents. I don't know how our Labour colleague goes on the doorstep. Because what are you telling these residents, guys? You need to speak to your leader. You are part of the leader. And we cannot mess up our residents constantly like this. They're suffering, not only our disabled, our children, our grandparents pension. He's just attacking every resident, every angle of our resident and it needed to stop. So when you touch on that doorstep, guys, tell the residents that they need to help you, word and proper letter to your Prime Minister to stop all these cuts and putting our residents at a stress to kill them off full time. He needs to stop.
Yes.
Thank you. I don't know anything to add and obviously I support the motion as it stands personally, but I would like to speak and comment this evening on behalf of the councillor, colleague, Karen Clark Taylor, who's unable to be here due to ill health this evening. Karen says, and I hope I can deliver this with the passion and experience that she has personally. Karen says, "I'm grateful to my colleagues for bringing this motion to council. I would like to bring to this discussion the concerns shared by many families about other potential reforms that the government is proposing to make that may have significant negative impact on the lives of disabled children, young people and their families. For months now, there have been running whispers about what government might do on said reforms. Families have placed great uncertainty about what names proposed will entail, which in and of itself is causing significant stress for families. We don't know if their children risk losing their hard-earned or educational support. But what we do know is that neither the Secretary of State for Education, Richard Phillips, nor the Schools Minister, Catherine MacKinnon, have done anything to provide any reassurance that SEND support won't be watered down. On the contrary, the minister recently told the Education Select Committee that there's not 100% guarantee, continuity or existing provisions. Perhaps worse, the Gazette, a notable legal news publication, reported that judges who sit on the SEND tribunal had been told that their services will soon no longer be required. It is important to remember that SEND tribunal does not just deal with EHPDs. It also hears disability discrimination cases, like the case I brought against my daughter's former school. The Department for Education responded to Gazette's report initially by denying that there is a white paper that would result in scrapping the tribunal. But subsequently, the government has talked openly about a white paper that will be published in autumn. The inconsistency in the government's position combined with the worrying statements being made in the Select Committee have raised serious alarm bells within the SEND community. Whilst we don't know what reforms are going to look like, we know that one possibility is that children who currently have ECHPs mainly lose them. Another possibility is that the government will create a two-tier system, much like it looked to do with PIT, whereby children with existing EHPDs might keep them, but future applicants in similar circumstances would not be eligible. For my family, this means that we don't know whether my daughter will keep her EHPD or if my son stands any chance of getting one if needed. And as for reforms to the tribunal, taking away the only group families to fight for their children's rights will only make the situation worse. The reason why the vast majority of cases make their way to the tribunal is that local authorities are failing to comply with their legal obligations. If local authorities were properly funded and held to account for failing to comply with their statutory duties, we would reduce the burden on the tribunal without taking away any essential legal rights from disabled children. Between the recent PIT debacle and the storm that is currently brewing over SEND reform, the overall message from the government to the disabled community at the moment is deeply concerning. Removing fundamental rights and support for the most vulnerable members of society cannot be the answer to any of the problems that this country might be facing. I would like to end this message by reminding everybody in the words of Tom Ginnerton, co-founder of Electric Umbrella, at the Britain's Got Talent semi-finals. "If you put a cake on it, it just might fly. For many disabled people, their EHP or their PIT is their cake. And without it, they will struggle to fly. So from one mother to another, I ask Richard Phillips, please, don't take our children's cake because they deserve to fly." Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Khan, would you like to speak?
Thank you. Earlier today, we heard a petition and the mayor actually said that we shouldn't be really stoked here, but the reality of that. And I just remind members here, just do sometimes, you know, I do go on doorsteps. So when people hear rhetoric, that's not true, I get it. I get it physically and verbally. So be careful on how people pump up, you know, things that actually, there's no reality to. Make a physical point, make a physical point. If I don't, when the reality's not there, just think about what you're stating, what you say as well. So for example, the PIT eligibility cuts were dropped completely. These were dropped completely. So I've had speeches, still talking about things which actually do drop, so they're healthier. So.
Element of you must credit, hasn't it?
Mr. Wee, do we hear councillor Khan, please?
So that means 3.7 million people, including thousands in Watford, keep their vital support coming PIT. The bill now enshrines in law that any future PIT changes must be co-produced with disabled people. A formal consultation includes clear employment support targets and that's a meaningful safeguard one for cross-party work. So it's been done, you know, it's something which we can work on. And you know, something I opposed within Labour Party, quite frankly. Thirdly, as a council, our job is not just to send angry letters. It is sometimes right to do so. We should welcome the fact that the worst of these proposals have been dropped. We should commit to working with the government to make sure local disabled people, residents in Watford know their rights and get the help they need. And we should support local charities and terrords to have a say in future consultations. Absolutely, we need to do that. And finally, the amendments that, you know, we're speaking from, keep us focused on helping people. Acknowledge the challenges that remain. Show that we can work constructively for Watford's disabled residents. And Chair, that's why I would urge colleagues to support these amendments and show we can work together for fair, sustainable welfare that genuinely listens to people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Barton, would you like to say something, or write, now about the three minutes?
I will go straight to the point I already told, that I am talking about those supporting the new comment. The change will play a part in.
What? There's nothing, I asked.
Yeah, it's about that existing. I do hear what my colleagues across the chamber are saying, but I think it has been forgotten that regards the mess up with the government, the people across the country and Watford itself, as we're speaking behalf of Watford residents, it causes the burnout and the stress and that doesn't change anything. And the government might make the return as many times as they wish to, but each time they decided that they was wrong and committed. They causing the harm to residents of Watford, those who are affected.
Local members? It involves the swot?
No.
We now need to vote on the amended motion first. And that is the amended motion from the Labour group. All those in favour, please show. Thank you. All those against? The amendment is lost. Sorry, any abstentions? The amendment is lost. So we now need to vote on the original motion, the one by the candidates. All those in favour, please show. Thank you. All those against? Thank you. Any abstentions? Scare it. Thank you. Thank you so much. We will now move on to the final report. Order, please. Final reports, investment in Central Leisure Centre. Council has received a report in the agenda pack and the minutes from Cabinet, which has been secreted by email to all members and published online. Before we proceed to this debate, I wish to remind members that one document is exempt from the public. If members wish to discuss the specific content of the document, we need to agree to the exclusion of the press and public and stop the line where the past. However, initially, we asked that we discuss the publicly available reports and amendments. And now invite councillor Williams to briefly comment.
Chair, can I just ask the monitoring officer a question about this? Very quick, forgive me, Chair. So it's sort of clarification about this, about interest and so on. But if someone's got a membership for this, do they need to declare an interest?
That's the asked question before the meeting as well, generally, that if you have a membership for the leisure centre, that would count as an interest that would be counted for or otherwise.
Thank you. I will now invite. Membership?
Yeah.
I will now invite councillor Williams to remove the recommendations from Cabinet, do you have up to seven minutes?
Thank you very much, Chair. It's always good to finish the evening on a positive note. And this is a positive report. Watford Borough Council and our leisure centres partners, SLN, are together financially invested in our Central Leisure Centre to the tune of £3 million. Central Leisure Centre is already a successful, popular and well-used facility and these proposals will make the centre and its offering even better. The improvements reflect what users have told us they want. More space, better equipment and a greater access to group classes. The gym space is currently operating at 52% above its intended capacity. This extra space is required. The group exercise classes has an average of over 1,000 on their waiting list every month. New studios are needed. The principal changes involve more than doubling the size of the gym space, providing up to 120 pieces of equipment, two new large group exercise spaces and a new dedicated spin studio, refurbish and change dry-side changing facilities and an improved reception and grab-and-go offering. Now, we do appreciate that parking at the Central Leisure Centre is often raised with us as a capacity issue. And we are in the process of making changes at Central Leisure Centre car park that should assist Central Leisure users to be able to park, but we prefer they cycle the walk. I'd just like to reiterate, it really is a great investment being proposed. I'd just like to reiterate, it really is a great investment being proposed, ensuring that Watford Leisure Centre is a major gym and exercise facility to complement the well-used swimming pools and to meet the local and growing demand. I do recommend the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, can I have my second one? Would you like to speak?
Resident might to speak.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on the public documents?
Councillor, nice to meet you.
Thank you, Chair. I'll complete it briefly with Stirling, who has mentioned that the leisure centre. I'm a regular user of the leisure centre and it's great for the money the membership and everything they offer to the residents, it's great. But they really need to improve on their services. I regularly go there and I've thought this up many times with senior members. The hygiene, the cleanliness really needs to improve. Sometimes, I'll go on a Monday morning, like I'm never right, so I used to go at six in the morning, and the bins are overflowing with tissue paper, sanitary towels, and then I go back on a Wednesday with another class, and it's exactly the same. The sauna steam room has mould growing around it, and that's been on the youngest occasions. And at one time, there were actually maggots coming out of the tiles, and someone was called in to see them. The emergency button for several weeks now has been working in the sauna room, the whole water's not working. And sometimes when you raise these issues, they've got some young staff sitting at the membership to tell them, and it just goes over their head. And then you speak to someone senior, they want someone to email them, and you email, you never get a response back either. And a lot of the, especially the women's only session on a Friday afternoon, a lot of the women approach me as a local councillor, that why is this not being done about it? And when I do mention to them, nothing really happens. And every day when I go, the children's pool is open. But on a Friday, when there's ladies only swimming, the children's pool is closed. And when you ask why, they said there's no female guard, but then during the week there is, and then the big pool is overflowing with children. And it is quite dirty and filthy. I don't know if anyone else is a member here and goes there. The toilet, sometimes there's a foul smell, and it's overflowing with lot of junk around the government, everything. So it's great, like investing all this money, but they really need to improve their senses.
Thank you. Councillor Oatesky?
Thank you, I'm Jeremy, and I'm sorry to hear the tale that we've just heard. I should be there again tomorrow morning. And I will say that that building is in good need of refurbishment. I remember long enough, I remember when we actually approved the original plan, and my only disappointment was the climbing wall, which we hope that we have made a factor in tackling ASB, has never really flourished and is redundant space. But getting better use of the space, my trade partner, his team, all agree that there are rooms there, there's not been properly just one of them, absolutely less change to make into usable space. The equipment needs refurbishing. This is a great step forward, and I'm looking forward to having a rowing machine that doesn't treat you like art.
You need first of all...
Councillor Sharp?
Yes, Mr. Sharp. It is good that we are making this investment. I think there is always danger with, especially when, I remember when taking children to leisure facilities, and I started to do the same with grandchildren, that sometimes you could find facilities that got a kind of slightly municipal air because councils, while they maybe built a super facility, didn't actually have the money to continue the investment. And I think therefore, the long-term partnership that we have is a positive thing because we are talking about taking this forward. It's not simply going to, it's not going to decay and update it, it's actually moving at times and with demands within the sector. It's not for me to, I mean, obviously what we're debating here is the detail of the investment. But I would observe that as, it would be interesting to know the level of day-to-day complaints and user rate of complaints and how you can address it. I think that's a fair thing to know about. And perhaps we can be updated on that. But I would observe that the best thing is, the best way is to do it as they arrive as well, and debate on long-term investment.
Thank you. Councillor Camp?
Thank you. As a not an avid user of the gym, I'd like to make a proposal that it's almost like a contract, there's 2.5 billion pounds being invested, and it's almost a social contract, because it's taxpayers' money that's going in. And one of the key things that Natarin has mentioned and other people have mentioned is that it should be, you know, available widely. You know, we've got a diverse society that grows town, and just making sure that part of that social contract, that there are facilities going to happen for women specifically, for children, it's much more open as well, because, you know, for private users, and some barriers, any barriers for usage needs to be removed. And that's just a plea. As somebody who's not an avid user, and, you know, my aim and objective is try to be an avid user, and maybe that can help with getting into that.
Thank you, Councillor Camp. Thank you for that. Councillor Bell?
Thank you, Chair. And yeah, I will support this investment. I think, as Councillor Williams said, it is important that we give more gym facilities. And the thing is, he said about the waiting list. And though I understand what Councillor Sharp's saying, that it's mainly, in the same area, it's not the right place to raise individual complaints. But I think, because of what Councillor Sharp said, I think obviously, hopefully, because it's come out for council meetings tonight, I don't know if it's going to come out, but actually, hopefully, we will get action and it will clean up the swimming pool and the gym and the issue at Central Leisure, I think it is more pressing. If that gets cleaned up and that's good. But if we're talking about 2.5 million pounds, Watford County taxpayers, mainly overall, we do need to notice that kind of complaints, particularly for someone who's like yourself. So yes, I support the investment, but I hope that we do take on the complaints and the issues that Councillor Sharp has raised tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Dinkley?
Yeah, Chair, a lot of the issues I was going to say, they've already raised, so I won't repeat them. But parking, I can't understand why people would drive to the leisure centre and get on the treadmill. Why can't they walk or run there?
Could you put your hat on, Councillor?
Sorry, apologies, sorry. People would drive to the leisure centre and then get on the treadmill. Why can't they walk or run there so they can warm up and then they're already warmed up? And the other thing is the seriousness of the issues Natarin has raised. I hope she's made a list of those things and they can be taken up, please. And I used to use another gym for a long time, but I am now going towards partial retirement, so I probably would be joining this gym and getting and get Sahel and Arlette along with.
Thank you so much for that, Councillor.
Thank you.
Matt Peter-Tell, you're right, sir.
Yeah, thank you very much. Very happy to second you. I mean, I'll just say, that's the last contributor. I often see his family members at social, so it's a pleasure to see him. Just a few things. I know that Councillor Sharp raised issues around cleanliness. I'm sure Councillor, you know, I know that actually that is something that Open Spree's, I think, looking at the next meeting, it might be something for them tomorrow in that debate. All I would say from my perspective is that we have a very constructive relationship with SLM and everyone. But these issues are discussed at strategic level, councillors can raise them. The kind of leisure centre equipment, when I've said, is called Quest, where they go in and do this assessment. For the last round of those, they did 700 leisure centres were assessed. And of course, the entire country, five of them got the top rating, which was outstanding. And of those five, one was Watford Central, one was Woodside. So I don't think that happens without providing a good standard service to residents. And I'd say that if Councillor Sharp has concerns, if you have a reason with me, I'd like to take those up and raise them with the fire. But it's not my experience as someone who does use Social Leisure Centre, perhaps not as often as I ought to, but I have come to Councillor Walkin and Councillor Oates and others. But the key thing about this motion is, as Councillor Sharp said, about investing in a well-used facility. It's right that we make sure that it's, the sponsored demand is increasing demand, the gym is good, it doubled in size, it's big demand for classes, as well it's good that there will be more space for classes and the space is used as effectively as possible. Only should the car park and the parking pass there, obviously, Councillor Sharp, he should work to cycle with the Councillor's. But we are looking at changing the arrangements there to make sure that only people that use the leisure centre can access the car parks. You have to put in your registration and the ones to get into the centre, which I think will be important. Chair, this is something I'm hoping to do over the next few weeks. So I'm pleased that we're able to bring forward this motion. It's really, really important that we invest in our leisure centres. I think we've got a good provision there. This is about making it even better for our citizens.
Thank you.
Does anyone wish to comment on the Part B documents? Sorry.
I'm leaving.
You're right. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Mainly just coming back to Councillor Sharp's, well-made points there. Thank you for your comments regarding improving their services and cleanliness. And basically, I know you've not emailed me about them, sort of thing, but please don't hesitate to email me or to go through to the SLM's general manager. And yes, we will be sort of addressing those concerns with the SLM, let's be honest on that. Yes, as Peter Taylor just alluded to, we do have strategic board meetings with the SLM management teams every six months. And we do actually, there is a slide presented, there are complaints and complaints being reported. And the complaints we receive are on the low level, sort of thing. But yes, please come through to me on them, yes. And then, yes, I know our staff, they have monthly, weekly meetings with the team at the SLM there. And I'm in contact with SLM's contract manager very rarely, again, on matters like that, sort of thing. Again, I do reiterate, so thank you very much for raising those points, and will address those concerns that you've actually raised with SLM management. And yes, as Peter just said there, SLM are tomorrow evening at the Speaking Committee, so please do join.
Thank you. So does anyone wish to comment on the Part B documents? Thank you. So we vote now for the investment. All those in favour, please show? Do you want? Sorry. Thank you. All those against? Councillor Bashir, are you against?
No, I'm sorry. That's all right, ladies?
Any abstentions? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair. I did my...